All right, the Tuesday, August 18th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council will come to order. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, we are now going to have open time for public comment. This is a time for members of the public to comment on anything that's not on the agenda. So if you want to speak about an item that's not agendized, please go ahead and put your hand up via Zoom or send an email to publiccomment@tcmmail.org. We've got one hand up so far, so we will get to Roy in a minute. I just want to check with Rebecca. Did we get any email public comments pertaining to items that are not on the agenda?
We did not. We did get email public comments. However, both commenters did say that they intend to speak, though they may have technical difficulties, and if they do, then I can read them.
Okay, so we'll just come back to you, and if they haven't spoke by the time public comment ends, we will go to them. Okay, first up is going to be Roy Wolford.
Good evening. I'm going to send an email to each of the council members, and I was going to speak and address this issue tonight, but I think in fairness, the council, each council member should read my comment first. I hope you take it very seriously. This dates back to the council meeting on May 19th and addressing the resolution 19-2020 and my concerns about communications from MCE. And frankly, I didn't take any of what happened that night as the council members seeing it as a serious issue. I'm very concerned about that. So I hope you all take the time to look and read the email. Understand, I appreciate any comments, either an email, call me up, and we'll discuss it. But I think it's something that has to be clearly resolved by the council, because I don't think you're going in the right direction. So those are my comments. I will be sending the email later this evening.
Okay, thank you, Roy. We'll keep an eye out for your email. Alrighty, next is going to be Patty Stoliar.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to say I appreciate the collaboration between age-friendly Corder Madera and the town on getting the mask project launched. We have worked out with the Parks and Rec Department to put them at the skate park entry and at the tennis court entry as a trial to see how that goes. So I'll be curious to see how quickly they disappear, but thank you for working with us on that.
Thank you, Patty, and thanks for your leadership there. And next up is going to be Stacy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, town council members. I'm Stacy Avico from 159 Prince Royal Drive. I'm here to speak against the town council failing to adopt Resolution 282020, which did not extend deadlines for entitlements due to COVID-19. This rendered our building permit application expired and is a significant hardship for us. We've spent many years in trying to pull this permit and incurring a seriously exorbitant amount of fees along the way, some paid directly to the town. When discussing in writing with a building official from San Francisco what their COVID protocols are, he stated that they have provisions for dealing with permits that have already expired. He states, quote, "We always try to work with the customer to get the permit renewed so the work and project can be completed," unquote. "We are asking for the same reasonable process from our town. While we know you're not required to follow San Francisco's and other cities' leads, it is the right thing to do." We were told to stop working on the application because of the shelter in place. We were also told that the town was not issuing new building permits as per the building director's letter to us dated March 18, 2020. Somehow, the town absolved itself of the work of granting a new building permit citing the coronavirus pandemic and shelter in place, but yet the town did not turn around and grant building permit applicants like us the same leniency by extending our application deadline. Why not give the extension to compensate for the lost time that the town was not issuing new building permits and to account for the confusing period of uncertainties and protocol changes? Is it fair to demand from us the same deadline we met when the town was not even issuing new building permits? We don't think that is fair. Is it fair for the town to tell us to stop physically working and then demand we meet the same deadline? We don't believe that's fair either. Having a, quote, "open" building department during shelter in place does not matter when we could not do the work to complete our application and the town was not even granting new permits during this time. Also, as per the aforementioned building director's letter, the town already gave extensions to active building permit holders. The letter states, quote, "The expiration date of any active building permits will be extended by the length of time the Marin County Shelter-in-Place Order is effective," unquote. Why would the town give the extension to active building permit holders but then not give the same extension to permit applicants like us? As permit applicants, we were just as affected by the shelter in place as those that have active permits. We were also told to stop working. It is not fair to allow some people to get extensions but not others. We are only trying to build a nice, functional home for our family with our two young children. We enjoy living in this town and would like to maintain a good relationship with the town community. We ask that you reconsider your prior decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy. Next is going to be Joel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Good evening, town council members. My name is Joel Hernandez, and I'm at 159 Prince Royal Drive. I'm also here to share my disappointment with the town for not allowing deadline extensions for building permit applications affected by COVID-19.
Joel, are you able to move a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, is that better?
Better, thank you.
Awesome. So I'm introducing my disappointment with the town for not allowing deadline extensions for building permit applications affected by COVID-19. And if I can speak freely, it's unfathomable that someone in the town council completely ignored how COVID-19 affected our application and chose to believe that the expiration of our deadline was 100% our fault.
Joel, you're pretty much inaudible.
Oh.
We could hear you at first, and then it faded out pretty quick.
Sorry. Can maybe Stacy raise her hand? I can use her computer. Is that okay?
Sure, yeah. If you guys are physically together, go ahead and have Stacy put her hand back up. Sure. Alrighty, Joel?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Much better.
Okay, so I'm here to share my disappointment with the town for not allowing deadline extensions for building permit applications affected by COVID-19. And if I could speak freely, it's unfathomable that someone in the town council completely ignored how COVID-19 affected our application and chose to believe that the expiration of our deadline was 100% our fault. So quite honestly, I believe the town is being extra tough on this one extension request. I feel that we are being treated quite harshly, and in the time of this pandemic, we should be nicer to our neighbors and empathetic to their needs and struggles. It's not the time to be punitive and to institute harsh rules. Keep in mind that this pandemic is unprecedented, making planning and navigating this crisis extremely challenging. We are kindly asking some leniency from the town council for our application in the background setting of a national disaster and global healthcare crisis. Is that really too much to ask? To put into perspective how the pandemic has affected us, we were unable to see our own kids ages three and nine for weeks at a time throughout much of this pandemic as we were forced to send them away to be cared for so we could perform our essential healthcare duties. This is the effect of community resources and institutions shutting down such as schools and daycares. For the town council to ignore the effects of the pandemic on families like ours is surprising and unfortunate. Corder Madera is supposed to be a family-friendly town and should be more so during the time of a pandemic. I also find it disconcerting how some believe that we had plenty of time to pull a building permit without knowing all the complicated hoops the town made us jump through. For example, the town somehow chose to conjoin the building of our ADU with a building permit for our main home. Multiple public hearings were held discussing our ADU when the state mandated that it was supposed to only be ministerial review with no public comment. Of course, the town now changed their code regarding this process, but we were the guinea pigs that were traumatized by the town's faulty process, and now today we're still paying the price for it. Additionally, the certificate of occupancy for our ADU will not be given unless we first pull the building permit for our main home. Now that you've prevented us from doing so, you have also now prevented us from being able to occupy our own ADU, therefore severely infringing upon our rights and negatively affecting our livelihood. We are acting in good faith that we may come to a resolution of this issue with the town, and we are asking you to evaluate a building permit application that was only one month late despite the shelter in place. Please acknowledge the far-reaching impacts the COVID-19 pandemic has had on applicants like our families. I'm confident we can come to a reasonable resolution that would be fair to both parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Already next is going to be David.
Yeah, hi. I've got two items this evening. One is one that I've raised with the mayor and Todd previously, and I'd like to go back to it and to express my hope that the town will do some publicizing of the census, which is ongoing, although it is to be shortened a month. Todd has indicated that it's important fiscally for the town, and I just haven't seen anything from the town yet about this issue. It's fairly easy to contribute to the census, to take the census, at 2020census.gov, you can do it all in five minutes. The other item I had was some years ago, the recreation department sponsored influenza shots. I had something going on in generally September, as I recall, at which you could get influenza shots, and they don't do that anymore. I don't really want to go up to the civic center at that big to-do to get my shot, so I'm hoping maybe the town could take that up again and sponsor a flu shot event later in the year. That's all I've got, and thank you both. Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Alrighty, there are no other hands up at this time. Rebecca, did any of the folks who emailed in public comment not get a chance to speak already? Oops, you're muted. Rebecca, you're on mute.
It sounded like you said something really good, though.
Sorry. Getting out of practice with these meetings. Deborah Sartell sent in an email to publiccomment@tcmmail.org. I do see she's on the meeting as an attendee, so I'll give her a moment to see if she raises her hand. Otherwise, I will read it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. It says-
There she goes, actually. She just put her hand up, so we will hear from her directly.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I really just jumped on, because I thought the sanitary district was starting at 6:45, and you just started, right?
So this is the town council meeting, and the sanitary district will be after this meeting ends.
So my question that I emailed in, and I'm not sure if it's the sanitary district or you, is that I was just up the coast ways, and all along the coast, there were sandwich signs saying, please wear a mask, and then also says about the $500 fine if you don't. And I know that this week, I think it was, we sent people out, police officers out, to check on these little reports that people are making, but I think if we had those all over, I think everyone we encountered, and I'd been up there a month ago, and it wasn't this, everyone we encountered had masks on. So I just thought that would be a great idea for us. So I don't know if that's you or the sanitary district.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if I'm on mute.
You're not.
I have a question. Are we done on the other comments?
There are no other hands up at this time.
And I know that the Brown Act prohibits us from discussing items that have just now been put in front of us, but one of those was an older item, and I was wondering if there can be any staff commentary at all on the questions raised by Stacy and Joel, and in particular, if we are prohibiting the occupancy of the ADU, which may be completed. I do understand we're not supposed to discuss items that have just been put in front of us. It's got to be on the agenda, but if we could get a staff update of some kind.
Yeah, let's defer to the town attorney on whether that's appropriate to do right now, and if it's not, we can definitely follow up offline and then also follow up with Joel and Stacy.
I think if staff has a very quick clarification that the Brown Act would allow it, if it's more involved, then we would need to follow up offline or at a later meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Does staff want to make any quick clarifying remarks, or is this better handled in a separate meeting?
Better handled in a separate meeting.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for bringing that up, David, and we will follow up offline and/or in a separate meeting. At that time, there's no other public comments, so we're going to go ahead and close public open time. There are no presentations, which brings us to item four on tonight's agenda, which is the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the public may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion if they wish to do so. Would any members of the town council like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, would any staff members like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, we're going to turn this over to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull an item from our consent calendar, please go ahead and raise your hand on Zoom. You can also raise your hand to just comment on the consent calendar if you'd like to. Go ahead and give a couple seconds here for folks to raise their hand if they have any items they want to pull. Alright, I'm not seeing any hands, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the town council for a motion on the consent calendar. Bob?
Move to approve items 4A through 4H.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Fred and/or David. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Thank you. There are no public hearings tonight, so that brings us to item six, which is business items, and our first business item. Actually, no, okay, so I would imagine that we've got a lot of folks on the line who want to talk about item 6C, which is the discussion of and possible direction of staff on dogs off-leash and in the parks. And I was wondering how you guys feel about moving that to the beginning of the business items and dealing with that now? Are you guys amenable to that?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay, great. So let's go ahead and do that, then. We're going to switch the order here and start with item 6C, and that's discussion and possible direction of staff in response to community feedback regarding dogs off-leash in town park. Is there a staff report?
Sorry, with the moving of agenda, I need to move a small child, too.
Oh, no worries. Sorry. Didn't mean to-
Give me one minute.
Oh, my God, this is awesome. Yeah, so I'll start off. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So I think, and I want to thank Ashley for writing a really thorough staff report, and I think it spells out the discussion. As the councils were well aware of, but to remind the public, you know, when we came historically, the community and the council really weren't too keen on allowing dogs in the park, and so we've banned dogs from the park. I've worked here for 26 years, and that has always been the case for us. A few years ago, through the Parks and Rec Commission, we had a pretty good conversation, and we thought we would try to allow dogs in the park, but on a leash. And so this went to council earlier, I believe, last year, and we knew at the time that we were probably going to have to make some changes as we went. I mean, we've talked about this. At the same time, it turned into a conversation of, you know, of building a dog park in town park. And so after a lot of public comment and discussion, we did that. And so that definitely, at the time when we passed that, changed the ordinance for the dog park, we knew we were going to have to continue to have thoughtful conversations with our neighbors over on Mohawk and in Madera Gardens, and as well as the community, just to see how things are going. And so Ashley did a really good job of summarizing all of that in her background and in her report. There's a lot of public comment that went before the Park and Rec Commission at their last meeting, and we've also received a lot of that comment. It's attached to the staff report, and you all have those recent emails up until today that were received. What I'll tell you is, as I have, and I'm going to turn this over to Ashley in a second, but as I've from afar listened to the conversation and the concerns, one of the mistakes that I made as a town manager at the time, when I passed this leash law ordinance, it was always my intent from a staff perspective, even though it's not my decision, it's yours, but I would have brought it up back last year when we passed the leash ordinance, that we historically, as a town and all the other agencies within the county, we rely on the county's ordinance, a lot of times on leash laws. And so they have two. One is under voice commands. Those are on pathways and in some of the county parks, but most of us rely on the leash law restricting the leash to be six feet or less. And so that's one area that we did not put into our ordinance earlier when it was passed. I think that was a mistake, at least from a staff perspective. We should have at least presented that to the council, and I think it would have helped with a lot of the issues being brought up now. Some of the other things going on is we have a lot of dogs are off the leash, so they're violating it. We have dogs that are on a leash under the control, and I'll argue that a little bit, of the owner, up to, in some cases, 50 to 100 feet. And, you know, we're throwing balls into the creek, and the dogs are jumping in to the creek to swim and get their ball. And we've had a couple incidents of dogs off-leash where they've attacked other dogs or dog owners. So one of the first conversations that the Park and Rec Commission had was, look, first of all, we have an ordinance, and so let's enforce it. Enough with it. We've done a lot of education. We've talked about this. We've put out a lot of social media. Let's start enforcing the ordinance, and let's talk about signage, putting up signage in appropriate locations. And so Ashley's done a great job coordinating with RJ and Public Works of listening to the community and going, let's put up some strategic signage, reminding people of the ordinance. The second piece is, let's start enforcing our ordinance. And so Central Mountain Police Authority, the town has agreed to actually fund some extra patrols on a routine basis to not only extra patrol but to educate and to issue citations. And so that started a few weeks ago. And so that is ongoing. That will continue. Again, though, the ordinance, there is some, I'll call them a loophole. It was never the intent of staff to allow, or at least present to council, to allow someone to have a dog on a leash that is more than six feet. I mean, I guess we could talk about six to eight feet, but that really was our intent. We want them under the control of the owner, especially with the historical context of town park, how we use town park. That was always our intent, and so I just want to really make that clear for council of where I see one of the issues. Some of the other conversations for council to consider, and you'll hear it from the community members, you have the canal, the High Canal part that backs up between the fence line to Mohawk and the canal there. And so there's a strip. It's an easement. We allow people to use that. At first, there was some conversation of potentially considering restricting that area for use, but what I'll tell you, and again, I give a lot of credit to our neighbors on Mohawk, I think a lot of the concerns that we've heard is that they want dogs on a leash and six feet or less under the control of the owner. They don't really want dogs swimming in the creek, you know, either, and they want people to follow the ordinance. And so they're the neighbors that I would, as staff, I would really rely on to go, hey, are you okay with dogs, you know, noise, any issues that could be going on right behind your fence line? Are you okay with that type of use? And what I've heard, and again, we'll see what the community says today, but what I've heard is that is not their number one concern. They're willing to meet in the middle and to allow people to, you know, to use that area. What they're concerned about is, again, the leash violations, put up signage, and consider the county ordinance of a leash up to six feet. I support those as your manager for consideration. One other conversation, again, this is just a discussion. There are no decisions tonight, but one of the other things that staff is talking to the community about is, now that we have a dog park, and we still think we should allow dogs to go through, you know, the park under control with a six-foot-or-less leash, but should we think about allowing them to keep them on the pathways, to keep them off of the grass areas where we play soccer and lacrosse and all the sports? Again, we're getting a lot of complaints from people about that. This is a highly, I don't know, this is a highly contentious conversation, and so I'm sensitive to that. And so this isn't your staff giving our opinions. It's what we've heard over the last two decades of our community and how they feel about that park. And so I'll stop. If Ashley wants to jump in and add anything, feel free, Ashley, but really for you to hear from the community on what's going on out there.
Thank you. Todd gave a really great background. Just wanted to discuss that the Parks and Recreation Commission approved and reviewed the dog park rules at their May 18th meeting of 2020, and in conjunction with that, they wanted to hear kind of ongoing processes of how those rules were going to be working for the first month of the dog park opening, so since June 29th, and then collecting feedback about the dog park and how it was working in logistics, but also opening it up to greater comment and feedback on dogs in park, in town park in general. And that's where we're getting the majority of this feedback. And we've collected a bulk of feedback that first month, so that was the June 30th through the July 23rd, and the themes are listed below in the generalization for constructive. There's lots of positive feedback, and thank you for us opening the park. But just some of the constructive was requests for benches, which we have those coming, concerns about gates, dog walkers, communication with maintenance staff, concerns regarding large dog owners exercising dogs off-leash outside of the dog park, dogs using the low canal in early hours, concerned with historic drainage issues in the dog park area, observations of the houses in the wash area, sorry, the hoses in the wash area turn off too soon, concerns with potential mauling incidents, concern with owners not cleaning up after their dogs, observations that signs need to be improved around the park as well as in the dog park area, and a request for if they're vandalized, to have them replaced immediately. Also, a suggestion to have a postcard sent to all of the residents, just reminding them what the rules were and what the repercussions are if they're violated, and a suggestion on increasing the scale of punishment for repeat violations. The functional issues were addressed by Public Works, so all of those should have been completed. And then community feedback collected between July 23rd and August 10th regarding the Corder Madera Down Park, Town Park, Town Bark, excuse me, was that concerns, again, regarding large groups of dog owners off-leash outside of the dog park area, dog using the low canal, public with and without dogs accessing the east side of the creek behind the residences of Mohawk Avenue, and then requests to allow dogs off-leash in town park that are under voice control. So as directed from the commission at the June 29th meeting, staff has solicited sample policies and practices of enforcement related to dog parks and off-leash exercise of dogs in public spaces, and to date, the samples generally rely on local law enforcement for animal control officers to respond to reported infractions via phone number posted on a park signage. Then some agencies define the length of a leash and as a designated fine for set number of reported and corroborated infractions. And then, as Todd referenced, Marin County Park does not permit dogs to enter playgrounds or play areas, marshes, tide pools, ponds, or other sensitive wildlife areas, and provides policies for each of their preserve areas. And the county does have a dedicated website where you can search different areas. For example, dogs are approved on-leash in 58 areas and then under voice control in 25. And the policy aspects for council to consider based on staff research is, one, defining the leash length, two, defining whether dogs may access marsh or waterways, three, enforcement policies, entities, and fees, and four, public use of easement along the east side of the creek behind the residents of Mohawk Avenue. And at this time, it's requested the town council review and discuss the issues of dogs off-leash in town park and provide directions to staff as appropriate. off leash in town park and provide directions to staff as appropriate. And then depending on the direction received, staff will prepare to return to council at an upcoming meeting with any requested changes to review for consideration and possible implementation.
Great. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Todd. I think in order to move through this most efficiently, we'll, we'll do council comments, we'll do public comment, then we'll bring it back to the council and just go one by one through these four points that Ashley has outlined for discussion here. So let's start with, are there any questions from council members for staff? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, probably the $64 million question is, do staff have any idea where this went sideways? It seems like we went from one extreme to the other. And the extremes I mean was we had no dogs or animals actually allowed in the park. It seems like we had no complaints. We built a dog park, which you'd think would draw people into the dog park, and now we have a ton of complaints. Is there, was there a disconnect somewhere? Or is there any rhyme or reason behind any of that, why that happened that way? It just seems like if we have a dog park, people would be using it.
I don't have an answer for you.
I think, I think part of it, though, it's a good question and I don't have the full answers. I won't pretend like I do, but I will tell you a piece of it is, you know, we always say education. I think we do a good job of that, but it's enforcement a little bit. I think we have been lax over the years, you know, and we talked about it a lot at the Parks and Rec Commission. And people, it's pretty blatant, you know? I mean, I, every time I walk through town park, I've observed one to two violations, you know? So we've become really lax. And so I think signage is important. I think enforcement's important. And I think we just have to be on top of it. But I don't, I don't recommend that we go back to a total ban again. I don't think that's necessary. I feel like we're adults and we should be able to figure this out. And so I'm going to challenge the community to do that. But I think there are some loopholes in the ordinance and unfortunately that is causing problems, period, from my opinion. So I think we need to talk about those and Ashley outlined them perfectly.
Okay. And I would, I would agree with your comments. I have a couple of other questions. One is in the last, I want to say, couple of months, can you just kind of give the background on the educational efforts and what enforcement effort there have been?
I can speak to the educational portion of it is we've got signage around town. Rebecca's created signage. We've also created signage on the dog park area specifically, you know, outlining that no off leash use of the, of town park is, is permitted, as well as posting things on Nextdoor, Facebook and Instagram. And in then the town newsletter.
Also, I'll tell you from a staff perspective myself, I know Mike Moriarty, our code enforcement officer, I know Ashley and her staff. When we walk through that park, you know, multiple times a week, we also, one by one, educate people, stop them, share with them what the issues and what the expectations are. Over the past, I don't have numbers for you today, and so I apologize for that. But I know over the past four weeks, Central Marin Police Authority has started to go out there, really enhance that, that extra patrol over the last two weeks. It's every day now. There's an expectation to go out there every day and multiple times a day. I'm not happy about doing that, but that's what we're doing. And really the, after a lot of discussion with the chief, what I asked was for him to, to give a warning, actually a, a physical warning in writing. That's a warning citation. And then to log that person's name into our computer system. And so if they were to be contacted again, they would be issued a citation, zero tolerance. So you get one warning, education, and then you get cited. It's documented in our system. I'll try to get you those statistics at an upcoming meeting, but that's really the approach we took.
Okay. And then just one last question. Do you know if any citations have actually been issued? Or I guess you don't know the numbers. I just want to forget the warnings, but just on the citations, if any have been issued. And then do you know how much the fine is and is there a stepped up process? I know Marin County does that where they have, and they do the same type process where it's a warning, second time you get fined, but then the third time, the amount of fine gets bumped up. Do you know how that part works, the fine again, any citations have been issued?
Yeah. Ashley, do you know off the top of your head on the ordinance? I know it's a, is it a hundred dollar or something fine?
I think it might be only in the $60 and $70 range. And I think it's just a flat rate so far.
Seventy-six.
I, it's a good question. I think that's one that we may want to come back to. Like all of our fees and fines, we've really left them flat over the years. And it's time that we start, especially, you know, even with the leash law conversations and this, that you relook at the initial fine and then have escalators as we move forward.
Yeah, I would agree with you. And then just one last thing is that I know Marin County, like in Baltimore Canyon, dog can't be off leash in there. I think the fine is $185. But I think it may be initially like 50 and then everybody tacks on their fees. But I know, I think it's 185 and the second time I think goes up to 220 or 225. So they're pretty stiff. That's it?
Yeah. So our fee may be aligned with that, that actually, it may be pretty close. Cause I'll tell you, we probably get about 40% of fees and everything else is tacked on court cost. But we'll look at that. That'll be something we look at when we come back.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Good questions. Any other council questions for staff? No? Okay. Then we will go ahead and open this up to public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and put your hand up on Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. I know we've, we've also received quite a lot of public comment via email already, much of which has been included in the staff report. So we've got the printed emails in front of us as part of our agenda packets already. So we'll go ahead and hear directly from members of the public now. We're going to hear from James Jordan.
Hello, everybody. Good to see you again. Thank you first for providing a period of time for the public to have a discussion on the issue of the dogs in the town park. And my conclusion is that this discussion presented overwhelming evidence that the issues in the town park have to be remedied now. And the discussion also showed that there's a need for new code sections to address dog misbehavior, including the stated limit on dog leashes, prohibition of dogs swimming in the waterways around the park and disturbing the areas along the waterways where the birds nest. A difficult issue is to how to limit the number of dogs that are presently using all areas of the town park. Options may include require dogs stay on only the paved paths or dogs stay off of the sports fields and basketball courts, or allow dogs to be only on the paved paths in an area of grass that could be designated over by the dog park. The lack of enforcement regarding the dogs has been a problem. I think the town should have a written code enforcement plan that identifies who will do the enforcement, how it will be done, and when it will be done, including a schedule. Some of this could be done by someone at, on the park staff who works at the rec center. It could be done by the town compliance officer. But my strong feeling is it's not fair for the town to put the responsibility on individual citizens to enforce the code and requiring them to call somebody to complain. I think that should be a routine function that's performed by the town government. And our past experience has shown that relying on the police as a primary responder hasn't worked too well. They have other priorities, especially during this virus pandemic. And if we call them, by the time they arrive, the code breaker might, might have left the park. Now, one final topic, and I've heard there's a plan for in addition to the dog park. And this is, there would be a walkway from the dog park to the parking lot by that pet food store there. And there would be designated spaces for people to park in to use the dog park. Now that gives me concern because that's going to bring more people into the park to use the dog park. And I suggest maybe if that is in the works, that could be delayed until some of the present issues are resolved. But this could present a, a solution if that did happen and there was that walkway. It could be that's the entry to the dog park and you close the entry that's in the town park so that the people going to the dog park go into the dog park only. I think that would decrease the number of dogs that we have coming and going through the whole town park. Thank you for considering my statement.
Thank you, James. All right. Next is going to be John Davis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Boy, lots have been said, a lot to try to address that I won't be able to address. I am, I am one of the, the main violators of, of our dog leash laws. I am the guy with the 100 foot leash. I've been going to the, I started to take my dog to the park during the pandemic and enjoyed having her off leash and was very responsible. And I have no problems with dog leash laws, with their enforcement, following them, which I've, which I've been doing more recently. I have problems with the framing of concerns expressed as well as the, the substance of them. My belief, I don't know Mr. Jordan, I don't know many other people who've, who've commented, but I have had several encounters with Mr. De Vilbus over his fence, starting with him demanding that I take my dog out of the water one afternoon. I, I did so, but, you know, found that his, his excuses of concerns for my off leash dog being a danger to ducks and wildlife and habitat did not apply to himself. So I saw him with his dog off leash and when I confronted him, he said, well, that's this side of the creek. So my, and he's, he's video recorded me and photographed me on most days and has, has rallied his neighbors, passing out flyers with my picture on them and pictures of me with my dog behaving fully according to rules and regulations and safely and respectfully, but with statements that accompany those photos that are completely fabricated and sensational. So here we are, having spent months calling police. He's been calling police on me. He, he offered me a compromise months ago that if I took my dog to the other side of the park, he wouldn't call the police, he would stop harassing me. And I said, look, it's public space, the water there, I should have every right to use it. My dog's behaving properly, I'm being respectful. My dog's innocently playing in the water, I, that's not okay. So I'm trying to point out his hypocrisy that if my dog is unsafe on a long leash or off leash, why would it have been okay for me to take my dog across the park? Basically, what I'm saying is this is, is the result of a campaign of, of concerted harassment. And most of the claims about long leashes are fabricated. First off, it's within the rules and I understand that people are shocked by it. I've been reading all the, all the posts. So long leashes, you know, they take a bit of practice to learn how to handle, but they're definitely not a problem in my view and they give very real control of a dog. And I, I only let out as much as safe is, as is safe under the circumstances. Sometimes it's three feet, it's 100 feet, only if no one's within 100 yards of me.
The three minutes of it's fine.
And John, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up. This is three minutes per.
Okay, all right. I, I sent in a document. Thanks for your time. I just want to say that I think there are other options that should be considered.
Thank you, John.
With Larkspur forces. Thank you.
Thank you. And we, and rest assured, we have your email.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up is going to be Pat Revathio.
Hi, everybody. I'm on the Parks and Recreation Commission, as you know, and I am feeling a little upset right now because I feel like this whole big issue has been caused basically by the one man who just got off the phone. And I don't know him, I've never seen him down there. But I think his insistence on trying to use the park in his own way, which is a very aggressive and privileged attempt to totally dominate the park and, and use up the wetlands, which are used by the birds. I mean, I want you to throw the book at this guy. I want him to be notified that he has already been warned and that there are plenty of places in the county that he can find if he really wants to run his dog in the muck. There's a dog beach at San Quentin, that there's all kinds of places that would welcome his dog. And the fact that that dog is not allowed in town park to be off leash or even on a 100 foot leash should be just, you know, there shouldn't be any way, any need to bend this rule. And what he needs to know is that whoever told him he could be in one side of the park was just trying to be a nice person. And that's what Corder Madera usually is. People try to be nice, they try to help you out, but you have proven to be a total nuisance. And I think you owe the town an apology and I hope you will have the courage to make one. Okay, guys, I think that helped. My heart's still pounding, but at least I got it off my chest. Thanks so much for all your work. I totally support you making this a very stiff penalty once people have been warned. Thanks a lot, guys. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. All right. There are no other hands up at this time. Rebecca, are you aware of any email public comments that are not included in the staff report?
Yes, there were several emails that were sent to publiccomment@tcmail.org. And I think some of those people may be attendees at this time.
Do you want to maybe let us know who they were? And then we'll give them a minute to raise their hands if they want to speak in person. And if not, maybe we, you know, read up to three minutes.
One was Joel De Vilbus, but his comments were sent in via email and were in the packet as well.
Right. Those are in the packet.
And then there was Catherine Lazarin, who is not on the call. So I will start my timer and read that at this time.
Okay. I think she was in the packet as well, I want to say.
I, it was one of the ones that I emailed.
Okay.
Council earlier today.
Okay. Okay. And actually Rebecca, we did just get another hand up. So maybe we'll, we'll take this comment and then go to that email comment. All right. So this is going to be Roy Wolford.
Now, I'm going to make a comment and it's something that the council needs to be aware of. And I hope Teresa educates all the council members on Rosenberg's, Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Commenting on a personal matter and attacking a person has got to be forbidden. And Mr. Mayor, you got to stop it or any of the council mayors, I mean, any of the council members need to stop the personal attacks because I've been attacked a couple of times. And it is absolutely uncalled for in this forum and the Rosenberg Rules of Orders forbid it. So please, Teresa, you're about eight months slow in getting back to me on this issue that happened last year in October. And I haven't heard from you on it. So I'd appreciate you getting it settled and educating the council members.
Thank you, Roy.
Amen.
Okay. So there are no other hands up right now. So Rebecca, do you want to just read that one email that you were thinking might not be in the packet or three minutes of it? Hope you're muted.
It's a brief email and it just also included a Nextdoor thread of, of comments on a recent attack on a dog in town park. And it was something I forwarded to the council members earlier this afternoon and placed in the agenda packet that is now re-uploaded online with all of the public comments received over the last three days. It says, I think the town has to better enforce its rules about dogs off leash and clarify and strengthen its rules about where dogs are allowed in the town park and how they need to be controlled by short leashes and prevented from swimming in the canals and pond. I am attaching this, to this email, a string of comments that recently appeared on Nextdoor website about dogs in Corder Madera. I think that these comments generally support my view about the need for better enforcement and new rules. Catherine Lazarin. So that this comment and the Nextdoor thread was, is now included in the packet under public comments.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. There are no other hands up at this time and no other email public comments that are not included in the staff report. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment and bring this back to the council for discussion. Like I said, I think the best thing to do is just move through each of these four points that Ashley's laid out in her staff report here. So we'll start with defining leash length. So any council members want to start a, a brief discussion on leash length? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, I, I think from what I've seen, I think the normal leash length is six feet. And I think that's what should be read into the ordinance and keep it simple. One question I do have though, if I may direct to staff and that is, I'm not sure what San Onkelmo or Larkspur has as far as these types of dog ordinance type laws. I'm just saying that for Central Marin Police Authority, trying to keep it consistent across all towns. If that's not possible to do, that's fine, but I think we need to look at that consistency also. But I would go for six feet.
Good, good point, Fred. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I've been actually walking a lot since my bike crashed two years ago. And I've been walking through the park and I have seen this in person in the morning at about 6:30 or 7:00 AM for the past several months. And I think we absolutely need to impose a leash law. It is a mess down there, early in the morning with dogs running all over the place. It's not good for the park. And Joan Vaughn, who was on the park. And Joan Vaughn, who was on the Parks and Rec Commission for, I don't know how many years, said this would happen when we passed this law. So Joan, I'm telling you right now, you were right. And I said it in a public meeting, but we absolutely need to limit the leashes and I think six feet is appropriate. And we need to make sure that we enforce it.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else want to weigh in? Charles?
I also believe that six feet is reasonable to transit the dog through the park. I don't think the park ultimately is a dog park completely, it's for children and others and it's adjacent to an elementary school. I don't approve of dogs off-leash unless they're in designated fenced areas. And I also don't think for the sports fields that the dogs are appropriate for many different reasons. So I think six feet on designated paths is the correct way to go. And I just want to mention that I think part of it, there was this question about why we see it happening more now. I think because of those stay-in-place orders, I think you see more people going out into the parks and, and looking for places for their dog that's close by to, to explore. But that doesn't ultimately make it right. And then, you know, I, I think that a lot of people that, I have a dog now and I take it to the dog park and a lot of the people that I've talked to about why they keep their dogs off the leash is that, well, a lot of them aren't even from the town. They're coming now because the town, town park is a, is a bigger amenity for the overall, like, southern community. And so, you know, even if we had local kind of communication plans, it might not have reached everyone. That's why I think the signage will be really good, but I do, and even in the past when I talked about it, do approve of dogs being on shorter leashes, so, you know. And this is just the park, ultimately, I think that anywhere else, you know, this isn't a town-wide ordinance, I would think, so.
Okay, great, thank you. David has just come online here, looks like he'd like to speak, go ahead, David. You're muted, though. Let's see. So David's video is frozen for me and he is currently muted. So I think we'll, we'll give him a second here to see if he can unmute that. In the meantime, I'll just chime in and say that I agree, I think, you know, I support dogs on leash in, in parks. I think that's, that was the right decision, but I also think that if there's no limit on the leash length, that it kind of defeats the purpose. So I agree, I think six feet is a reasonable length for leashes. Seems as though, yeah, Bob?
And I just want to ask a question, so Charles, in your comment, did you just say that you think we should also restrict usage to pathways for dogs on leash?
I, 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 I think that that's reasonable. I don't see why the dogs would need to transit in the grass, right? Because I, my own personal experience with it is when my dog gets on that grass, it immediately starts tugging on the leash and wants to get loose and run in that grassy field, right? And as an owner, you know, you don't want to do that to your dog. But as long as it's clear that it needs to maintain, get on the path and get to the dog park, I think we need to provide those paths, but, you know, on a six-foot leash, you know, walking across, you know, I, I think the unfortunate thing is there are just bad players that don't pick up, you know, the, the remnants of the dogs going across the grass. And I just don't think it's fair to have stat, you know, town park staff, police that, or children play soccer in it currently, that kind of thing. I mean, you know, but the issue is the goose stuff is just as bad, so it's, I, I just, you know, I just don't know why they would need to. But I, I do want to talk, Bob, later on about the access and stuff like that, you know, on the other side of the canal. Because that's another, that kind of.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think, I think we've been pretty clear on leash length, oh, David, you're, you're on.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
I just have a question, when I walked dogs, I haven't had one for a while, but I, my favorite form of leash was a retractable, which isn't exactly six feet. And I was wondering whether Ashley had a specific recommendation that concerned those, I think they're probably 12 foot, you know, six to 12, but most of the time you'd carry it at six, but it has the ability to have that flexibility and the pullback in and so forth. 50 to 100 feet to me is, is just, it's, it's another form of scoff law.
In some of the research that I've done, they have mentioned specifically the six foot can be un-retractable, but the max length is six foot.
Okay, seems like that might get into a little bit of a hairy area just in terms of enforcement, because it's like, I have a retractable leash and I'm, I'm not sure how long it is. I would guess it's probably like 10, I think maybe like 10 feet or between eight and 12 when fully extended. So it's like, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't know if they sell retractable leashes that come in absurd lengths, like 100 feet or 50 feet or something, I mean, that would obviously be crazy, but it, you know, I don't know, I guess.
So also with that, I, I think it would be hard to enforce or understand, right? But then also that, that is an argument why you might want to designate them on pass, because ultimately, you know, if they, if they get off the pass, you know, they, six foot is a nice leash length to keep them on the pass. If it gets any longer than that, then they get, they'll, if they, unless they're walking straight forward on the path, they'll violate it. So I, I would say you can control it through both, but.
Oh, yeah, I, I think I agree with on the path or in the dog park.
Okay, yeah, Fred?
Yeah, I would agree with that, I think we should go six-foot leash and dogs on paths only, because we don't want, I've seen people where they cut across on the grassy areas. And again, I know my dog, if she, she wouldn't do that, but if she did, she would probably stop and pee along the way. And again, you have people playing there, so I would go for six feet and dog, and path only.
Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I would just concur with that, I think you guys are right on, on that, because what we're forgetting is those are usually soccer and baseball fields and right now they're not. And that's part of why this is happening, so yes, I think that's a really good point, Fred and Charles, thank you.
Yeah, my children are playing, we've been able to do social distancing competitive soccer through the Parks and Recs, so we are using them now. Quite something to see.
Yeah, I guess another thing that I'm thinking about is just from, from my experience walking my dog, I know that, that she likes to go to the bathroom in the grass and not on the path. So I don't know if we would need to like designate like, you know, a three-foot buffer zone along the path or something where dogs are allowed to be on the grass. It, it just, it feels like if we restrict it to the path, I feel like we may get a lot of frivolous complaints about like, oh, well, I saw somebody's dog set one of its legs down in the grass right off the path. And, you know, that would be a nightmare, so.
The, the answer is that dog walkers need to remain on the path and a six-foot leash would keep that, would control that.
I like that, I think that's, that seems clean and reasonable. Okay, so, so we've touched on leash, leash length, we've touched on, you know, whether, I guess, access to, to fields and stuff. Let's talk about dog access to marshes and waterways. Who wants to start us off there? Fred?
Yeah, I think that which dogs should not be allowed in waterways or the marshes. Because to me, it's not just the canal area off Mohawk, but we also have a marsh area off Pixley. And if I can remember, I was trying to find it today and I couldn't find it somewhere, and I think it's in Marin County. Their verbiage kind of nails that down, or I think dogs are not allowed in marshes, waterways. They had the verbiages there, but I, again, I think it should be limited, I go back to the pathways and the dog park.
Great, thanks, Fred. Bob?
I agree, I would absolutely concur with that. I've been reading about this a lot the last couple of days and it's clear that dogs potentially cause all kinds of wildlife problems on waterways. And after watching some of the videos, the dogs in the waterways, and actually having seen them personally when I'm walking through there in the morning, I think I completely agree with Fred, keep them out of the water.
And I agree with Fred and Bob.
So I'm a little conflicted, because I live on a lagoon and I have a dog. As where, you know, I, I respected the creeks and everything. At the park now they're being abused, right? But ultimately, like, the lagoons are surrounded by homes and the homes, the animals are right there. So, you know, I don't know ultimately if we can craft an ordinance that addresses specific problem areas. But, you know, if I have to accuse myself from really weighing in on that because of a conflict, I'm happy to do so. Because, you know, my, it's, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I hear you, yeah, Fred?
Yeah, I just think whatever we do, we need to keep it simple, because once we start doing it's A, but then we carve out B, C, D, and E, it's gonna be more difficult to enforce.
Yeah, I agree, and I, you know, I agree, I don't, I think that we should keep dogs out of waterways and wetlands. I think wetlands are universally understood to be among the most important and the most vulnerable habitats. And so I think, you know, that we should keep dogs out of the wetlands. And I think this applies to lagoons too, frankly. In fact, we just received an email from resident this morning talking about how they spied an otter in, in one of the lagoons here. And so I think, you know, that shows, you know, a thriving ecosystem that we have here. And I don't think we want to be introducing, you know, dogs in a way that could be detrimental to the nature that we also enjoy.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to go back to Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Lee, if you think that you perhaps have a conflict of interest in this matter based on the proximity of your home to a waterway, if you are certainly within 500 feet, I would recommend that, that you recuse and leave the meeting, which in the virtual world would mean that you can turn off your video and turn off your mic.
Right, but because this is actually reviewing an ordinance, but it's just making comment, can I make not a comment? And then, because there's other things and I've already stated it, I won't speak to it anymore.
So you're not really gonna be able to do that. You're not gonna really be able to do that and the fact that this is not a final decision or an ordinance yet, it doesn't, doesn't matter in the analysis, so.
Alright, I'll turn off.
I'm, I'm saying this out of an abundance of caution, because we're not able to sort through this on the fly. But I think that it sounds like there is probably enough here that it would be.
The park, but if we're gonna expand it beyond that, it's now a known thing. And so I will turn off my video and, and no longer comment on the dog park issue.
Teresa, does that, does that apply only to, to dogs and waterways, or does that apply to this whole agenda item?
So if anyone.
We're almost done with the discussion on waterways.
So I think on the waterway issue, I think if there are other issues that you don't have that same problem, you could provide your comments and direction on those issues. There may, we would have to sort through whether if this comes back as an ordinance, you may need to step out or not, and you and I can sort through that later. But if the other items don't present the same problem, then you could come back for those other items.
Great, okay.
Okay, so you would need to leave the room, right? Okay.
Okay, great, so Charles has left the room, but I believe we have wrapped up our discussion on dogs and waterways. I think we were unanimous on that. Ashley, do you feel like you have clear direction there? Okay, great, so if Charles can still hear us, please re-enter the room.
I'm sorry.
We're going to discuss enforcement policies, entities, and fees regarding dogs off-leash in parks. Who wants to start us off there? Yeah, Fred?
I, 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 I don't have a problem with the two-tiered system, like the, the way it is now where there's a warning, as long as there's a database that's maintained and the second time it's, it's a fine. I think we need to look to see what the fines are and I prefer to do a tiered or stepped up fine where, you know, first time it's X amount and then it gets stepped up after that. And one gentleman, I can't remember who it was, he mentioned about potentially having like a enforcement schedule. I'm not sure if a schedule, if he meant like to have a schedule and people are gonna go out there, I don't know if that would work, because after a while, people are gonna know when the schedule is and that's the times they're not gonna go. So we may want to think about that or how we do that. And one last thing, and I looked at staff, I would assume that it's Central Marin Police that's gonna be doing the enforcement, or would that also be our code officer, or Ashley's gonna lead me on this, would that be park staff?
Yeah, no, my, my intent would never have park staff do it, just because I would never put them in that situation. But our intent all along has, you know, it's, it's budget and so it's, it's really expensive. We've hired a full-time code enforcement officer and Mike Moriarty. Our intent though is to go to a hybrid and possibly hire a couple of part-time code enforcement officers moving forward to help us with all of our ordinances. We passed a lot of ordinances recently and, and like, I think everybody has said on this discussion, we need help and we can't just rely on Central Marin Police Authority. So we hear you and, and we're working on it, but it, it does come down to dollars and cents. And, you know, our budget's stretched as it is and so we're doing our best in that area.
Thank you, okay, any other council comments on this? Bob? You're muted.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I would take a look at what the county ordinance is and try to be consistent with that. But, you know, that would be a really good benchmark and a place to start and see what they have. And if that means increasing, it's so be it, but it seems, I think last time I checked it was 75 bucks, 76 bucks, somebody said earlier in the meeting, so. Probably could be updated, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to weigh in? Charles?
I agree.
David agrees?
Alright, I'm gonna say something crazy. So I think that ultimately bad actors have created an enforcement issue and so ultimately there's a budget to that and that they should pay proportionally to pay for our enforcement of it, but, you know, that's probably unreasonable and not usual, the government is usual, but that's the way I feel, is ultimately people should pay for their mistakes. So that being said, you know, whatever is a reasonable standard that staff can establish, I'm happy to hear it, but that's what I'd really like, is not to have town paid in for something that ultimately is just for a few.
Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, I know we've been talking more about ordinance, but I noticed in the staff report, it also mentions policies. What type of policies would be involved? Because again, it seems right now everything is ordinance-driven.
Ashley can jump in here, but there's two things actually. So when we're talking about the ordinance, you know, when we talk about specific to fines to the leash law, to the leash length, that would be we have to amend the ordinance, because we're gonna push things to, to the Marin County Municipal Code. But there's other, there's other changes, if we restrict dogs to pathways or waterways, we can do that by resolution. So there's two, there'll be two things that'll be coming back to you. And it's, obviously, it's a lot easier to change, you know, an amendment resolution. So from a policy standpoint, you know, I do think it, it goes back to how do you feel about enforcement? You know, what is our philosophy on that? So it's helpful to get that feedback as well from all of you. And I don't, am I leaving anything else out, Ashley, from a policy standpoint?
So just to clarify with the marsh, I'll just say if we decide to put, have dogs on path only, not in marsh or waterways, that, would that be part of the ordinance or enforceable? Or is it part of policy where policy wouldn't be enforceable, right? I'm just trying to get clarification.
Right, possibly, I'll tell you that if we wanna, we, we have to be really careful how we, how we write, write that. Because if you're gonna go into waterways and marshlands, think about our marsh. We allow dogs out there, are you gonna ban the marsh? We have a lot of waterways, so I think we might want to be careful. But we'll look at it because the council is directed so. But I think by, by limiting the leash to six feet or less, you solve the waterway issue. I, I just honestly feel like we do, and so I don't think we need to get too cute with this. I think that would be my recommendation to council to consider, but we'll, and, and see how it goes. And if, and again, this is by resolution, so if it, we do that and I'm right, great. And if I'm wrong, we come right back to you with a resolution the next meeting and we change it. I think we could cause ourselves more problems, that's all I'm saying. Enforcement is a huge issue for us as a small town, all communities. You hear it on everything that we pass, it's easy to pass these ordinances, it's really hard to enforce. You know, keep in mind our code enforcement officers are here, you know, during banker's hours, you know, we're not here on weekends. So we have to rely on Central Marin Police Authority who has 35,000 calls for service a year. So that's just my thought, but again, we heard you and I think we'll, we'll play around with this and come back to you with some ideas to think about.
Okay, thanks.
Great, and I'll just say, I, I, I agree with everybody and I think what's most important to me here is just consistency with the rest of the Central Marin Police's jurisdiction and also with the county. You know, I don't want to force our police officers to learn three different languages. David, did you want to say something?
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Great, okay, awesome. Ashley and Todd, do you feel like we've covered item three well? Any, anything else? Okay, cool, then last item is number four here, public use of the easement along the east side of the creek behind the residences of Mohawk Avenue. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I've actually had a couple of conversations with staff about this over the past couple of days. And I may have heard something different at the beginning, in the. And I may have heard something different at the beginning in the staff report. So I would just like to ask Todd, what, um, and Ashley, what do you think? What's your recommendation on this? Cause I wasn't quite sure from the report is whether we should be, um, changing public use of the easement some way on the east side of Cordera Creek or not. What's your feelings on this now?
So my.
And if I'm putting you on the spot, tell me and we'll, we'll discuss it, but.
I think it's something that, as Ashley said in her report, and she did it very eloquently, better than I, you know, the, the commission brought it up as one of the issues to consider. I was leaning as I watched this play out over the last few months, that we should shut it down. We should restrict access. But then I started to listen and talk to our neighbors on Mohawk, who I would argue are the most impacted. Uh, you know, as the, and, and I've heard, um, I think Joel, who's on this call right now, actually made a comment of like, hey, look, it's more important to restrict the waterways. I'm open to allowing access to that area. So what I would like to do between now and when we come back to you is really engage those residents on Mohawk that back up to the park and just really get their feedback. So I can report that to you. Um, and I think if it's a majority, then I, I would think we should maybe want to consider that. But again, as we talked about the waterways, um, we have a lot of paths like this. And so we want to be consistent in our town as well. So, um, I'm kind of retracting that a little bit, um, to say let's, I, I need to engage the community a little bit more on the, in that area before I actually give you a recommendation.
Charles?
I would also.
Oh, sorry, Bob, were you not done?
Just to say, that makes sense to me.
I would also make the suggestion to speak with somebody at the school because it would have been noted to me that a lot of students travel on that path to avoid going through the main part of, uh, the park.
Well, so it actually, so is it okay for me to speak now? Okay, so it actually closes off on the other side. So it was only one, like you walked in and then you have to walk back out the same direction. It's not all the way through. So I think, um, having the, if, if you really want to have a discussion about that space, um, uh, I, you know, in walking on the path that we restored, um, between Redwood, uh, you know, along there, um, the neighbors started taking better care of that whole area after the fact. And it's become a much better part of the community and less blighted and, and less maintain, you know, it's way more maintained now. And it's a good, solid gravel path, right? If you, if it is that you want to open it up, I think one thing that I've learned, uh, is that when the school is in, it actually puts up signs that says you can't walk through the school. So the only way to actually transit the park is to walk completely around it over by the playgrounds. And so it creates a much larger, uh, kind of, if, if you follow it, ultimately they haven't. But if you really want to create a thoroughfare and a better walking, uh, community, you would open it up on both sides. But that brings in a lot more traffic to the neighbors. And I think that ultimately they should be the deciders of whether they want that or not. I mean, there could be benefits as far as improvements that we could look at, but that's a much longer kind of discussion. And maybe it's not part of this anymore. It's, it's, um, you know, future, future stuff, so.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, would anybody else like to weigh in on this? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, um, just one thing with the waterway, which is just on me logically, if we do pass an ordinance six-foot leash on pass only, I'm going to make the assumptions, dogs should not be over in that area to begin with, right? Cause there's no paved path and the six-foot leash wouldn't work. Um, I just want to get that out there. And I just wanted, uh, two other things. I want to clarify one thing with staff. We're talking, I know we're talking about town park, but the general ordinance for, for Cordera Madera, cause I've seen this on the bike path with Reebok, dogs cannot be off-leash, correct? On like bike paths or anywhere in Cordera Madera. I'm not talking about the park now. I'm just talking about sidewalks, bicycle paths, um, other parts of town. Again, excluding the park.
Yes, dogs are, dogs are supposed to be on a leash. We don't allow any areas like the county does where it's under voice command. Dogs are to be on a leash.
Okay, thanks. And then one last comment, just to wrap, kind of wrap it up for me. Um, I think everything we've talked about, I think one thing we've, we're tying it back to which we haven't mentioned is public safety. Um, and that's both for kids walking through the park, adults, people that just want to use the park for their own pleasure. I think all this stuff ties back to the safety part. Thanks.
Good point, Fred. Thank you. Uh, anybody else want to weigh in on this? I'll just say I, I support, um, I think, I think getting, uh, you know, kind of initiating a more in-depth discussion with, uh, with the neighbors in the immediate vicinity is probably the, the best path forward on this. But I realized that that's, doesn't exactly solve the issue tonight. It's a little fuzzy, but, um, you know, is staff comfortable with that? And is the council comfortable with that? Okay, great. Alrighty. Um, then I think that resolves that last item there. So, uh, Ashley and Todd, do you, oh yeah, Bob, go ahead.
I just have one more question. Um, Ashley, did you win any response to the community feedback regarding, uh, the town park, the dog park? That wasn't specifically requested, but you had a lot of items in here and I just wanted to know if you wanted feedback on that or.
I think we're really looking to the, to the four points that really address the off-leash. I think we're good on addressing the in, in park.
Great, thank you.
Great. So Ashley and Todd, you guys, you guys feel like you have clear direction there? Awesome. Okay, great. Uh, let's move on to item six A, which is accepting the annual report from the sales tax citizens oversight committee.
Am I taking that one for a second? Rebecca, do we have someone from the oversight committee?
Yes.
Karen is on the call, I saw. I don't know if she.
Karen Gerbosi is on the call to, um, speak to that. I, we can either unmute her or I can, uh, I can bring her over as a panelist.
Yeah, sure. Can we do that?
Oh, she's, she's on by, via phone, um, for audio. So I don't know if I can bring her as a panelist, but she's been, um, I think unmuted.
Let's see, Karen, are you there?
She's still muted.
She's on it. She's as a panelist on both audio and video appearance. It's frustrating when you call in because you have to like dial, I forget, like star six or something.
I believe it's star nine.
Star nine, yes. Okay, don't listen to me.
Rebecca, are you able to, uh, just let her in like normal for a public comment?
Yeah, sure. Oh, there's a hand up, uh, there's a hand up, a phone number. And, uh, so let me unmute this and see if it is her. She's also muted there. Alright, if we, oh, Karen?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Breakthrough in technology. So I just sent basically my written comments. I don't have much to say. Hang on a second. Let me pull up what I sent. So this is what I have to say. On behalf of the oversight committee, we are all very glad that Cordera Madera has the financial resources of the sale, that sales tax measure F provides. Now during current challenges, we can see that these resources have assisted, if not allowed, the town to meet critical and essential financial needs. It was always the intention of the measure to provide resources for unforeseen emergencies, but we certainly had no idea of the emergencies that would occur or how essential these resources would be. In this spirit, we are very strong advocates for the two and a half million dollar emergency reserve fund. And for this fund to remain an essential component of the town's financial structure.
Great, thank you, Karen. Um, is there any additional reporting on this issue or should we take it to council questions?
Yeah, just, I'll just add, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, as you see the staff report put together by Lorena, uh, again, Karen, um, always appreciate her comments and she chairs the committee. You know, over the years, the oversight committee has taken on an expanded role for us. They're not only evaluating how we spent our, our funding, uh, the previous year, so after the fact, but they also provide input and recommendations to us, um, before our budgets are even approved. And so, um, they, they really play a key piece in our financial role moving forward. Again, this, this is a unrestricted tax. It can really be used for anything, but the, the town felt strongly and the sales tax oversight committee feels strongly that it should be used in specific areas. And those are outlined on page one of the attachment. It's under flood control, streets and potholes, safe routes to school, senior and youth programs, fire prevention and disaster preparedness. As you move forward in that attachment through pages one, uh, one and two, you can see how that money was spent this past year. Again, that was reviewed by the oversight committee. It was also reviewed by the oversight committee before the fiscal year. And then lastly, Karen touched on it. It's the last page of the report. We currently have an ending balance as of June 30th, 20, um, actually the ending balance of June 30th, 2019 was 9.5 million dollars. At the recommendation of the oversight committee, we did set aside 2.5 million for an emergency reserve. In those instances of a disaster, we have that available to us. And so that was a lot of forethought, uh, of that oversight committee. And I'm really glad we have it right now. And luckily we don't have to utilize it, but it is available. So when you back out that formal, uh, informal reserve, we have seven million and some change, uh, for our capital improvement projects to do the good work, of RJ and his team and a lot of the work that Marla Orth and her team has done the last year in fire prevention. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions for Karen or Todd? Doesn't look like it. We'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. If any members of the public would like to comment on the citizens' sales tax oversight committee report, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom. In the meantime, Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments on this item?
We do not.
Great. And we do not have any hands up. So we will bring it back to council, uh, for discussion and a possible motion. If there's no discussion, I, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
Do we, we need, do we need a motion? Or do we just accept, it just says, except item is requested.
Oh, um, I don't know, Teresa?
I mean, if that's the case, I'll, I'll move the way, I'll move the way, accept the motion. Then we accept the item.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Great. Rebecca, can we have a quick vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnheart?
He is on mute.
Yes. Vice Mayor Kuhnheart? Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, item six B is ratify the rejection of all bids received on August 5th, 2020 and authorize the director of public works to approve the revised plans and contract documents and advertise for bids and award a construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder not to exceed a base bid amount of a million dollars plus an additional 10% contingency for the 2020 preventative maintenance project number 2004. Is there a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So the 2020 preventive maintenance project is a joint project between Cordera Madera, Mill Valley and San Anselmo. And it consists primarily of slurry seals to about 20 roads in town. And the original project had three other roads that were scheduled to receive a slightly more robust treatment, um, that we call thin bonded wearing course. We bid that initial project and, um, the portion that was the, um, that specialty treatment called thin bond wearing course came in much higher than expected. I would attribute that to, kind of, there's a limited number of contractors that perform that type of work. And, um, we didn't see the value in proceeding based on that price. And at the same time, um, given we're kind of toward the end of our, um, ability to deliver that project with, um, the onset of, of winter, we had to kind of act swiftly and make a decision to reject all bids and rebid. And so today we're, we're asking that you ratify that decision made by town staff to reject all bids and then, um, authorize us to open bids again, which will be coming up this Friday. And, and we've been able to, um, continue with the slurry seal roads and then also, um, take one of the roads. And, um, that was previously that specialty treatment and make it also slurry seal. So we're, we're still accomplishing the, the, you know, vast majority of the, the goals we wanted to accomplish from the original project. But again, just kind of keeping an eye on the overall value and, and not paying an excessive, um, amount for something that, um, just wasn't in, in the, the initial bid. So, um, with that, yeah, I'd ask you ratify the rejection of all bids and allow us to open bids on the, um, on the upcoming second rebid, um, with a not to exceed amount of, uh, $1 million for the base bid plus, um, an additional contingency. And then separately, that would, um, not factor in to account the, um, the two other agencies component.
Great, thank you, RJ. Are there any questions for staff from council? If there are none, we will go ahead and open this up for public comment. Any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand through Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments on this?
We've received no emails, public comments.
Thank you. And I don't see any hands up, so I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for comments or a motion. Charles and then Bob?
I just wanted to comment to RJ, thank you for, um, being proactive about managing, uh, city funds and trying to get the best dollar value for the town, um, in this project and coming back to us. I really appreciate it. And I would encourage you to feel like you can always do that with us, um, as it's the, the proper course of action, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Bob?
Well said, and I will move to approve.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Thank you, Fred. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnheart?
Looked like he was speaking.
Vice Mayor Kuhnheart?
He is, he is nodding and putting his thumb up.
Okay, yes. Um, and Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. Uh, we already covered six C's, so we'll move on to item six D. That is response to Marin Civil Grand Jury Report entitled cyber attacks, a growing threat to Marin government.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I also have our IT specialist, Michael Deng, on the call. So if you have any questions, um, so this, this is cybersecurity is one of, um, one of the top priorities, uh, council gave staff at your recent workshop. And it's in our work plan for this year to really develop a, a robust and solid cybersecurity plan. What we've been doing to date, um, has, has been expansive and it's been, we've really focused, looking back through the good work of Michael, on what are our vulnerabilities and what we found is a large amount of the vulnerabilities have to do with staff. Us not being educated or, or not following policy or making mistakes. And so Michael's done a really good job over the past 12 months of giving us examples of our mistakes and how we are attacked through email and phishing scams and, and other things like that. And how we can best prepare and, you know, uh, educate and prevent those. And so that's an ongoing effort over this past year. Education and training has been really at the top of the list. We've also passed, uh, uh, an email policy and some policies and procedures of all in, holding ourselves accountable to that. It's a zero tolerance. Um, and so that's, that's been one. The second piece is really on a technology front and a budget front. And so, uh, we are coordinating with our partners in Marin to see how we can all do things better, use our resources better, use our IT services better and ultimately have a better security, uh, plan moving forward. And so that's something we'll bring to council, uh, this side of the year, uh, moving forward. One of the things that the grand jury report also talked about, uh, is that we as staff, that a lot of the cities and towns aren't disclosing attacks or how we are attacked. And so we don't unless it's something that we are mandated to do federally. There's a certain criteria. And so we haven't been a victim to that level, but we have been, you know, all of us. It's, it's scary when Michael shows you on a daily basis, an hourly basis, how many attempted attacks on our system take place. So that's something that, um, in talking to the mayor and the council earlier in the work plan, is to talk about that in a public forum on a routine basis, whether it be annually, quarterly, twice a year. That's something we'll bring back to you as a recommendation, but to share with you in the community of what we're experiencing. And most importantly, if we are a victim of something, how, how did we become victims? How did we make that mistake? And what are we doing to make sure it doesn't happen again? So that's, that piece of transparency is really the focus, I think, of the grand jury, a big piece. And so we hear them loud and clear and we heard the council loud and clear. We're working towards that. Uh, but with that, I'm happy to stop, uh, and answer any questions. And again, my. And again, Michael is on the phone call. Should you have any questions for him?
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any council questions for Todd or Michael? Seeing none, we'll open this up to public comment. If anybody in the public would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments?
We do not have any emailed public comments.
Thank you. And we have no hands up, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. Bob?
Uh, I read it. I thought it was really smartly done, very competent, and I would move to approve it.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Fred. Rebecca, vote, please.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Great. Thank you. Item six E is response to Marin Civil Grand Jury Report entitled Follow-up Report on Web Transparency of Agency Compensation Practices.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Michael, why don't you take the rest of the night off? Thank you for all your good work. So this one was, we actually had to ask for an extension. And so I apologize for that. This, this, this report was invest or was investigated earlier in the year, but it was actually, it was actually dropped on all the cities and towns right in the middle of COVID. And it was, uh, it was a frustrating thing on behalf of the managers in the county. And it was, is, you know, the timing of it was difficult for a lot of us. And one of the frustrations that I'll just share with you is I think that our town staff does a really, and our council does a really good job with, with transparency, especially as it relates to the budget and compensation practices. And, and you know, this is a conversation that the grand jury has looked into over past years. And one of the things that really jumped out at me as we worked on this report, Rebecca and I, was that we had a series of recommendations just a few years ago from the grand jury to have a specific page called the Transparency Portal and to have this information on there. And that's exactly what we've done and we've built on it. I think, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as we work on our communications plan, I think our website, there's so much good information, but it's daunting for everybody to find. And so taking that constructively now and looking at this report, you know, we had a pretty good conversation, Rebecca and I, of, you know, let's, let's look at this as we start to, through the communications plan. Let's start to enhance the capabilities and make it easier for people to find this information. And so we're actually going to go away from the recommendations of the grand jury two or three years ago and try to improve it through this grand jury report thoughtfully. So our response, our responses are attached. I had difficulty in a couple of them. You'll see some partial disagreements. I don't like to do that. But the, the way the questions were worded were, we were speaking on behalf of other cities and towns. And I, one, we don't have a policy of doing that. And two, I don't know what other cities and towns are, aren't doing in this realm. So. But with that, I'm happy to stop and answer any questions. I'll just tell you that Rebecca, you know, takes this stuff, you know, personally, like she cares. And, um, you know, she was, she was texting me at 11:15 one night, you know, reading this report and trying to make the website better and clearer for people. So I want to give, her name is not on this report, but her name is all over our town being transparent. So I want to give her credit where it's due. So thanks for that, Rebecca.
Amen to that. Thank you. Are there any council questions? Looks like there aren't, so we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Any members of the public who want to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments?
We do not receive any email public comments.
Great. Thank you. And we have no hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
This is Fred. If nobody has any comments, I just want to make one, which I want to thank Rebecca for all the hard work and just being super diligent on this. It's great. We appreciate it and recognize. And with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Great. Back there's perfect. All ready. Can we vote, please? Got it. Thank you, David.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yeah.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Thank you. And our last business item is six F, and that is resolution establishing the 2020, 2021 appropriations limit.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to say how awesome our finance director is that your town manager can give you a staff report without her being on it because her staff report is written so well on the GAN limit because that's. So her report is straightforward, but again, under proposition four of the state of California, municipalities are limited in the amount of revenue they can spend each fiscal year. And that limit is calculated using a formula that includes a change in population and inflation as defined by the state. And that's actually in your attachment. We'll go over that in a second. The appropriation limits, this appropriation limit is known as the GAN limit. The limit is set each year by resolution of the town council. Attached is a worksheet prepared by staff, which shows the GAN limit calculation for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And the calculation shows that the GAN limit is 41,410,000. The calculation shows that the 2021 budget appropriations subject to this limit is under the appropriation limit by $31 million. And just a quick, just a quick breakdown, it's on exhibit A of your staff report. If you look at the top, you can see, actually go down one box to the 2020, 2021 limit. It's the, you can see the 41,710. That is our limit. If, if you go down to the next area, you can see the estimated tax proceeds that are subject to the appropriation limit. And that's 16 million. If you go down to the bottom, you can see the total tax proceeds subject to the limit. And there's some items that are exempt. Social Security payments, unemployment insurance, some capital equipment, technology and others in a total amount of 5.8 million. And so then that gets us to the total appropriations limit subject to the limit of 10,606. And the good news is we can spend another 31 million if we had it this year, which I don't recommend that we do. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions from council? All right, then we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments on this item?
I did not receive any emails public comments.
Great. Thank you. And we do not have any hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion. Bob?
Move to approve resolution number 30 slash 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second? Perfect. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, sounds like we, we've got a second for sure. Rebecca, vote, please.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Thank you. That brings us to item seven, which is council reports, starting off with our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick update. Every week I start Monday morning and I think things can't get more difficult and challenging and they seem to do that, you know, as unfortunately we've are in the, on the middle of, you know, PG&E power shut offs. We had some unique things happen and hearing from residents, it appears to be an ongoing thing over a period of years over on the east side up on the hill. I want to thank Steve Stein and RJ Supo, our Public Works Director and Staff, Chris Good, who have been working with PG&E to kind of set up a, a community meeting next week with Mark Van Gorder and the team to kind of discuss these issues and start to work through what's going on over there outside of some of the power shut offs, if that is the case. And so with the council and staff has received a lot of emails from the community and you've been heard. I think we've been responsive to everyone that has sent us a message so they know what we're working towards. And so look for that information moving forward over the coming days. Again, there's a number of fires that have been starting over the past few days and today going on in Marin County, Napa County, Sonoma County. And it just reminds me of what, what we face. And again, just all the good work of Central Fire Authority and Marla Orth and her team of just the incredible work that she has accomplished in such a short period of time to keep our community safe. You know, there's still a lot more work to be done, but just amazing. And I'm so appreciative of what she's accomplished. So thank you, Marla. The, the mayor, myself, Rebecca, and Jen Reedy, our communications consultant, have been meeting and working towards our communications plan to present to the council. I'll tell you that we had Jen completed a whole bunch of community surveys on different levels. Both people that have had contact and are involved with the town, people that aren't really aware and don't have that much communication with town, staff in the council, as well as outside agencies, and really developed some really good feedback and best practices for us to take moving forward. We had a staff retreat on Monday. All the directors and myself met with Jen. Jen facilitated that conversation for three hours. And we got to work on, you know, something of like, what are we about? You know, everything that we do as a council, as a staff, as a town, what are we about? And what is our mission statement? And what are we trying to accomplish? And so we worked towards a draft that we will share with council at an upcoming meeting. But I was really excited where we're headed. And there's a lot of energy with our team moving forward to really share that and move forward. And from it, we also think that we're going to develop a communications position within our town. So we think it's one of the most important things that we do. And again, it's a priority of this council and this work plan for us to develop and figure out how we communicate better with our community. So I'm excited of our progress there. I'll also share that we do a, a townwide survey for anyone. It starts really in planning and building department, but over the last two years, anyone that has dealt or gone through the permitting process downstairs, we send that information, both the contractors and the resident to get their feedback. But we also do a community survey for anyone that's had any dealings with the town to see how we're doing from a customer service standpoint. Something I've shared with council and the community, you know, the building process is difficult. The permitting process is difficult. And I've been working with staff over the past two years on it. As you know, I've moved my, my, my office downstairs and building and planning so I can be there to support our staff and understand, you know, the difficulties both our residents face as well as our staff. And I'll have an item coming to you probably in the next meeting or two of having an outside consultant. I don't like to use the word consultant. It's actually a retired city manager and community development director and building official to come in and help our staff to see if we're using best practices for our procedures. Everyone that touches our permitting process from fire to public works, the sanitary district to the building official, how can we be? How can we do that? How can we be better? And how can our customer service be the best that it possibly can? And so I think our staff, you know, and myself, we're excited about that. We're excited to share that with the council moving forward. And we think it'll be helpful for all involved. So that's something that we're working on as well. And then lastly, the Corder Madera Community Foundation recently contacted me and shared that they are interested in us considering helping those residents in need again for some rent support as we did last month with the help of Lorraine. And they want to donate another $25,000 potentially. And so I shared with them that I thought that was something the council would support. And so I'll be bringing an item to you at the next meeting to see if we can match those funds and do one more round. So again, I thank the Corder Madera Community Foundation for all their support with everything. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Beautiful. Thank you. Any questions for Todd? If there are no questions. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. One other thing. I'm sorry, boss. So the other one is Central Police Authority, there was an article recently, they called it a sting operation. And I'll just tell you that we would never do a sting operation, you know, if we, we don't call it that. They did an operation, but what they did is they, at the request of, of the managers for Corder Madera, Larkspur and San Anselmo in conjunction with the chief of police, we, we recognized this is an issue. You know, people aren't following the mask order. And so what we wanted to do with some of the thoughtfulness of like Patty Stoller's ideas too, like let's help, let's educate, let's get masks. We wanted to handle like a pedestrian operation, like the crosswalk operations. Look, we're going to be in the area this week. We're letting you know in advance. Here's what the rules are, you know, follow them. And so that's what they did. They went out and they went into the three communities. They, if it was an egregious violation, they cited, but really their intent was to give a mask to remind everyone, this is, this is serious business. We need to follow the rules. It's public safety. And gave them warnings. And again, put them into the system. This is your first, you know, your last warning, you're going to get cited moving forward. If it was really egregious, they gave a ticket. So again, I don't have statistics, but that was their intent. And I thought that was thoughtful and I thought that was the right thing. I wasn't completely excited how it was explained in the, in the article, but that, that was our intent. That's how it came about. And that's what we're doing and we'll keep doing it moving forward.
I'm pretty sure that's not a stain, but thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Great. Any questions for Todd? And if not, we'll go through and just do some quick council member reports. Fred?
Yeah, just real quickly, I've been attending some of the MCMCC meetings, economic recovery meetings, which are every Friday. And then I also had the opportunity to think about, God, it's probably about a month ago since we haven't been in a while, to meet with Ashley for about an hour just to discuss and park and rec some of the stuff that's going on with her and her department. That's about it.
Great. Thank you. Charles?
Yeah, so I have been attending the TAM Commission and they're currently got some good news. They funded 11 quick build projects, which I think Corder Madera was one of the recipients. I think that that was a really good use of innovation funds to deal with the current issues that a lot of towns want to address immediately. That was unexpected in their budget. So I, I want to give a thumbs up to them for that. I think that there's a lot of, they're, they're doing a lot of rethinking about what the impacts are going to be overall. And, and they've had some really great reports. If you get a chance to go see them. In particular, I think the bus routes have been really impacted and they're really trying to find out what the, how to address that appropriately and meet the needs of, you know, the community that really relies on that service. And then also I've had special meetings called with the town of Mill Valley and some of the county supervisors exploring the north-south greenway and ways to basically improve bike conditions more immediately. And those are ongoing. I still, I have one next week, but those talks are really good. And I think Corder Madera is set up in a really great way to help facilitate an actualization of the entire path and maybe multiple forms moving forward. RJ has been really good at informing us and TAM about the steps that Corder Madera has already made as far as design for that. So I think there's really good things coming out of that. So that's what I'm happy to share. And then also, you know, I'm on the safe routes to school. I'd like to mention that tomorrow is the first day of school. Unfortunately, they're not able to all attend in person right now because we're on the watch list. But there will probably be just more community activity and children back in town or in town and, uh, you know, exploring and moving around more. So please be courteous about that and help support them in this difficult times.
Thanks so much, Charles. Bob?
We had a Marin wildfire JPA meeting and we're still pretty much spending a lot of time getting things set up. We picked a law firm. We're going to be picking an executive director, I think, in the next meeting. But we're making progress and we're getting there. That's it.
Great. Thank you. David?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The MCE's board has essentially taken the summer off. But the, on the sea level rise front, the BCDC group is going to be having a discussion this Thursday evening of the plans that are coming forward under the whole Bay Area Sea Level Rise enact program. And if anybody wants to partake in that, they can listen in on the BCDC regular time. That's really all I have. Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to beg forgiveness that since it's 11:20 my time and I'm experiencing so many different technical issues, I'm afraid I'm going to be absent from the SD2 meeting.
Okay. Thanks for letting us know and we will miss you. Thank you for your report as well. I don't have much report there. I've been attending the weekly MCCMC Economic Recovery Meetings as well, although I missed the last one. So thank you, Fred. So thank you Fred for attending those as well. And I will be attending a League of California Cities North Bay Division meeting coming up, I believe, next week. And that is all I've got to report. So that wraps up our council reports. Does anybody have any comments on item eight A, which is the draft agenda for the September 1st council meeting? Yeah?
Will we be able to get the dog ordinance that on there, Todd? Again, I want to press staff too much. Just asking.
Yeah, I'm shooting because we have a number of things working through the town attorney's office. I'm shooting for the second meeting in September. On this meeting, we're going to have the garbage rate increase. And that'll be a pretty good discussion, I think. But we, it is a priority. I know I need to get it to you quickly.
But in the meantime. That the expectations are out there for citizens and stuff like that, so they know where it's at. Thanks.
Great, thank you Fred. Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn the council meeting and convene the SD2 meeting. So the town council meeting is adjourned and we will convene the August 18th meeting of the Board of Directors of Santeri District 2. For what should be a nice brief meeting here. Rebecca, I'm going to wave the salute to the flag. Can we have a roll call, please?
Board member Casissa?
Here.
Board member Lee?
Here.
Board member Avasio?
Here.
Board Vice President Kuhnhart?
Departing.
Board President Beckman?
Here. Thank you. All right, open time for public comment. This is a time for members of the public to make comment on any item that is not on the agenda. Members of the public will have three minutes apiece to make their comments. If you'd like to speak to any item not on the agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand. In the meantime, Rebecca, have we received any emailed public comments for open time for SD2?
No public comments or emails.
Great, thank you. And we do not have any hands up, so we will close. Open time, there are no presentations. We'll move on to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have already been discussed and do not require further discussion. Any members of the council or public can pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Would any members of the council like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, would any members of the public like to pull a consent calendar item or comment on anything on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion on the, or excuse me, council, the, the board of directors for a, for a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we prove consent items for A and for B.
Second.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Board member Casissa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnhart?
Yes, thank you. There are no public hearings, so we'll move on to our only business item, which is six A. Consideration of possible action to adopt resolution 052020, establishing the 2020-2021 GAN limit for sanitary district two.
Thank you, Mr. Board President and board members. Again, this is similar to our previous agenda item at the council meeting. And so again, attached is a worksheet prepared by staff showing the GAN limit calculation for fiscal year 2020-2021. The calculation shows that the amount of revenue that sanitary district estimates. That it'll collect is 8.682 million below the amount that is, that we are allowed to spend. And again, the attached worksheet is available. Should you have any questions?
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for staff from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public comment. If any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcml.org. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments?
No emailed public comments.
Great, thank you. Seeing no hands up, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and a possible motion. Yeah, Bob?
Move to adopt resolution number five slash 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Rebecca, vote please.
Board member Casissa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnhart is absent and Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That concludes our business items. Item seven, district manager and board member reports. Does the district manager have a report?
All, all I want to tell you, if we keep trending the way we are, which we, it looks good, there'll be no PG&E rolling blackouts tonight. So that's my only report.
Excellent, thank you. Any board member reports?
And the good news is we made it through the meeting without one.
Right, exactly. That would have been bad. Great. Any comments on the upcoming agenda? And if not, we are adjourned.
Great meeting.
Thanks.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you gentlemen.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.